I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. A roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we begin our meeting, are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to pull the, probably the council proceeding minutes, but I also want to pull the six o'clock minutes. It's the second one in there where we met at six o'clock in the executive boardroom to select council committee chairs, and the mayor pro tem. I have a couple of questions for our attorney on that one.
I'll move to approve the rest of the consent items.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the rest of the consent items excluding the city council meetings for January 7, 2013, and the city council special session minutes of January 7, 2013. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the question is for Mr. Scott, our city attorney. This is my 15th year on the council. I've attended seven other meetings like the one we had two weeks ago. The mayor conducted that meeting. Those with the highest vote count were elected either the mayor pro tem or the committee chairs. My recollection was that when we voted on the mayor pro tem position, there were Ron Christiansen, Dennis Anderson, Rick Fagerly, and Bruce DeBleek. The first vote that was taken, Ron Christiansen received three votes, Dennis Anderson two, Rick Fagerly one, and Bruce DeBleek one. In the other seven cases, and the previous city attorney was there, it was always the highest vote getter. I'd like for you to explain to me why it changed this year.
Councilmember Dacken, the vote you're referring to in the six o'clock meeting originally was by voice vote. It may well have been, as you have summarized it. Sitting here, I don't know. Point was another council member requested a roll call vote, so we proceeded with a roll call vote on each of those nominations. Now, this is a difficult question to answer frankly because there are no established rules or procedures anywhere. This is my, I know you've been through several of these meetings, this is my first, and there were certain practices, I think, that had developed that frankly they needed to be updated to comply with the open meeting law. As you know, when I heard that the tradition had been that these votes were taken by secret ballot, that caused me some concern, and I hadn't actually thought of it before the meeting started, but I had been through this in another city where that city was, got into a little bit of hot water for voting on a similar issue with secret ballots. So I knew right away that we had to do that differently.
Yeah.
That's why we went through the voting procedure, that's why I recommended we go through it.
Well, it's hard for me to understand and to accept that because after 14 years on the council and having gone through this seven different times, and never once before in those seven times was that procedure, that policy procedure ever questioned, and now all of a sudden it's being questioned. I think it really needs to be a written policy and a procedure, and of course that's our job as a council to establish policies and procedures once we get our Home Rule Charter put together. But I guess I was really very disappointed that that vote did not count.
I can address that. Councilmember Dacken, I respect your feeling about that and agree wholeheartedly that we, you know, that the council should have some procedures in place. You know, I can't speak to what happened in previous years, I just know that there are, I mean, there's an issue procedurally with can the council act on any one of those nominations when there's not a majority? Certainly the council can set up a process and adopt and pass some procedures so that going forward everyone knows, yes, in the case of the nomination for the, or the election of the mayor pro tem, you don't need a majority of the council to act. That's fine, but you know, like I said, there were no set procedures for me to refer to. And the bottom line is, after the voice vote, I think it's a pretty fundamental matter of parliamentary procedure that any council member could request a roll call. So I think with that piece of it, that was completely appropriate. I do though, take your point and understand it.
Mr. Mayor, it's very important that we get our Home Rule Charter established and voted on and make that the document that we use in addition to this standard code of parliamentary procedure so we understand going forward what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Councilman, what would be the solution at this point to your satisfaction?
I don't know unless others have a comment that they may wish to make.
Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too was rather confused and disappointed, to say the least. When Councilman DeBleek asked for a roll call, instead of doing a roll call, Mr. Scott, you told us that we would need a motion on each person, and so we'd have four motions to vote on, as there is four people interested in mayor pro tem. Now, I think all of us at the meeting understood that you could vote for one person, and that's what most people did, except for one councilman voted twice. Technically, since there were four motions, we could have each voted yes on every motion. Am I wrong? We could have had four motions and everybody approved 100 percent.
I think that's technically correct, yes.
So, not understanding that, because it was, the meeting was flipping along, and I know we were all confused because we were looking at each other and going, shaking our heads. Typically, when you vote for a position in, whether it's mayor pro tem or chairman, you nominate somebody, and well, there was four people nominated, you have them speak why they want to be a chairman of a committee or mayor pro tem, and then you vote. Everybody gets one vote. Seven votes, and whoever gets the most votes should win that election. Pretty simple. Why did you go to the fact that we needed four motions, one on each council, or each interested party? I don't understand that. It was really confusing to me.
Councilmember Christiansen, I'm happy to explain my thinking, and it was on the spot. My understanding was the six o'clock meeting had been a, you know, it's obviously a meeting of the public body because there's a quorum of the council there, but that it was kind of meant to sort through some of these issues so that time isn't wasted in the seven o'clock meeting when the actual action is taken with authority. Now, as I mentioned in response to councilmember Dacken, the issue with the voting by secret ballot, that is something that I hadn't looked at, but it, having experienced it in another city, I knew that we had to do something differently. I had not, you know, there are no procedural rules for me to consult to know that this is how the Wilmer City Council conducts elections for mayor pro tem. What I did was I deferred to the way the city takes action on any matter, which is motion, second, and vote. I regret that there is confusion because I believe every one of you that there was confusion through that process. I think that stemmed in part from the practices that had developed over many years that were not reduced to writing, and from the fact that this is my first such meeting. I think going forward, the solution is for the council to give some consideration to exactly how they want this to go, and obviously I could have some input in that and how you can have a set of procedures that are fully compliant with the open meeting law. Looking backwards, the vote at the seven o'clock meeting on the seventh was legitimate. It fulfilled the charter requirement to elect the mayor pro tem when the vote was, I believe it was five to two. So that was a valid action of the council.
I understand that, but there was a precedent set the last 25, 30 years of how we handled that reorganizational meeting on the first meeting of each year after an election. So, I guess I'm confused why you didn't ask, well, how do you, how does the council handle this? Because we've been doing that way for, well, since I've been on the council, and Mr. Dacken said for his seven times that he's been on the council. It appears to me that it was an invalid way of coming to the conclusion that somebody was going to be the mayor pro tem. I just, let me ask you one more question. Is there a remedy for this?
As I mentioned, going forward, the remedy is make sure that you have some procedures so that everyone, there's something in writing for, you know, for someone to change the outcome of the mayor pro tem election from the last meeting.
Correct.
The only option would be if there's a motion made to rescind that vote.
Which vote?
The vote in the seven o'clock meeting to select councilmember Anderson as the mayor pro tem. If that motion is made and seconded and a majority supported it to rescind that vote, then we would once again be back to square one and have to make that selection.
And making that selection, how would you suggest to do it? By proper vote? Each person gets one vote?
I think if there's, if that's the preference of the council, before taking the vote, you could certainly take a motion on the procedure you're going to use, and you can do it that way, as long as everyone signs their ballot.
But isn't it proper for each person to get one vote? I mean, instead of two?
That is one proper way to make that election if that is the procedure in place. It's also proper to take motions and motions of nomination and see which nomination receives the majority of support.
Well, we had four nominations, I mean, at that meeting, and the four people wanted to be mayor pro tem, so I don't know if that needs to be done again. That was already done, but I want your suggestion on how to vote. How would you say we should vote on this? Besides the nominations? You take four votes or one vote?
Going forward, either way is valid, and I think the council can select which way. It's just, it's important going forward that the procedure is agreed on ahead of time and reduced to writing.
But again, if we do four votes and there's four motions, what if all seven, it's a 7-0 vote on each motion? Then what do you do?
Would have to...
Because if I would have known that case, I would have voted for a couple of the guys that night also, more than once.
I appreciate that. That could weigh in favor then of going the simple election route and having a procedure that you do not need a majority of any, of the council to support any one candidate if the most votes wins. But again, that would have to be adopted as a procedure to follow for the election ahead of time.
Councilman Anderson, did you have a comment?
I did. I think we need to go back to the council meeting, and we had this discussion and we had this debate, and Mr. Scott said at least twice, if not more, if you don't like the way that it was done, vote the motion down. The motion is to elect Dennis Anderson for mayor pro tem. Vote it down and we will redo it. So there was the opportunity. The opportunity lost because it was then voted five to two to move forward. That said, I think clearly we need to establish a policy for the future. This is, this was something new to Mr. Scott, and I can understand that, but we need to have a more definite procedure. But the council has acted and with full knowledge of what our options were, so I think it's time we just move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we were to rescind the motion approving Mr. Anderson as the mayor pro tem, that would have to be done this evening, right? It can't be done next week or the week after. I understand, as I understand it, you sent us an email saying that would be the remedy if the council so desired.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow. What was, were you summarizing my position on what the remedy would be? I didn't follow.
Our only chance to change what happened is to do something this evening at this meeting.
That's consistent with the rules of procedure I have seen in other cities. It's a little difficult to answer any of these questions definitively at the moment because there is no formal code that the council has adopted. I know that's something coming forward, but that, basically, that's consistent with most parliamentary...
What I'm asking is, it's proper and it's completely legal. I mean, it's not in the Roberts Rules of Orders, but that could be done this evening. Is that my understanding?
A motion to rescind could be done this evening?
Yeah.
I think that's true, yes.
And this is the only meeting it can happen at?
I believe so, yes.
Cannot happen at the next meeting or the next meeting. Has to be the following meeting. I guess my question, it would be to the council, is there any interest in rescinding that motion and voting properly? I'd like to know if there is. If not, it is what it is.
Councilman DeBleek?
I guess, you know, I think we elected councilmember Anderson mayor pro tem. He was elected to that position because he got the most votes. I think it's simple and plain, the council voted on that the last meeting, and I don't know why it is coming up and being discussed here again. I think councilmember Dacken's point that we need some written policies and procedures on how to conduct that meeting is quite valid, and I think we should move forward and look at those and adopt some type of a written procedure on how to proceed and go through that. That reorganizational meeting, I know this one here was quite different from the last ones or the current ones that we used to, that I have sat through before. But in all practical purposes, mayor pro tem was elected with the most votes, and that was councilmember Anderson. And I see no reason as to why we should try and rescind that, go back and, or try and change it, so.
If I may put this item to rest, is there a motion on the table to rescind the? No, sir. Do I hear a motion?
Well, I'll make that motion for discussion. I can understand Mr. DeBleek's explanation, however, if he was on my end, he'd probably feel a little differently. It was a very confusing pre-meeting to the council meeting, and I know we all were confused, and everybody felt that same way, and why the first vote didn't count is beyond me. I mean, I guess we were relying on our city attorney, Mr. Scott, and it turned into a, I don't know what it turned into, but it wasn't, it wasn't fair or proper. Anyway, I, I'll make that motion for discussion purposes.
Do I hear a second?
I withdraw my motion. And I'll move to approve the two minutes, A and B.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the two city council minutes for January 7, 2013, and the city council special session minutes of January 7, 2013.
Question, Mr. Mayor. Does this mean that it was correct? I mean, I just like, I brought it up because I realized when I sat back down at my table that the votes didn't tally up right. Does that mean, does the numbers didn't tally up correctly? That it's not right? Simple question.
No, I'm trying to...
I would say, I would say yes. But I have no problem with Dennis or Rick or any of these great guys to be mayor pro tem. I just wanted to, I brought it up merely for the fact that procedurally was not fair to everybody without that, and I'm repeating my last thoughts the last meeting. The council so chooses, but I definitely agree with the fact that since this was brought up, I'm sure it's going to have to be handled at Labor Relations Committee meeting if...
I understand your point, and I, well, it seems like a straightforward question to me. It's, I can't sit here and say it was done wrong. The vote that mattered was after, in the seven o'clock meeting, it was five to two. Now, I know, and I, because I've heard from several of you, and I believe you, and was there in the room with you, that there was confusion on the way that transpired. Like I said, I regret that there was confusion.
Well, I don't think it was...
It was valid, though, to have motions made and a vote and go with the...
But it was never clarified that we could only have one vote.
I...
And so my point is correct. I don't want to be barking up a tree here, but I think my point when I brought it up is correct, that it was not done procedurally correctly. I can live with the decision. I just wanted to make myself, I think I brought a point.
I...
I think it's legitimate, and if the council doesn't want to do anything, fine. But I highly, I sure hope we don't ever run our presidential campaign like this or anything else in the future because it was, it was not correct. But I'm fine with it.
That being said, do we bring it to a vote?
Please, to approve the minutes.
Yeah. To approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Furlin, do you want to explain to us the certificate of recognition to the Candy Ojai County Area YMCA?
Yes, we do, and I think there are some folks from the Y. Teresa Wittenberg is here from the Y who'd like to come up as well to receive this. We have a certificate of recognition for the Candy Ojai County Area Family YMCA, and I'd like to read that, and then we'll give Teresa maybe an opportunity to have a few minutes to talk about the YMCA. Whereas the Candy Ojai County Area Family YMCA Incorporated is a local nonprofit in 1996 with the original building opening in 2002, and whereas the YMCA operates as a volunteer-led organization with over 213 individuals volunteering in 2011 through programs or policy work and collaborates with over 70 other nonprofit and civic organizations annually, and whereas the YMCA provided over $1,000, $165,662 in financial assistance and community donations to over 1,015 disadvantaged children and families, senior citizens, and adults with special needs, and serves nearly 5,800 individuals in a building designed for 3,000, whereas the YMCA has launched a $3 million capital campaign for expansion to increase the services provided to the community by adding more wellness space, new wellness studios, specialized wellness studio for special needs populations, and racquetball courts, and a multipurpose gym. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and Wilmer City Council hereby offer their sincere appreciation to the Candy Ojai County Area Family YMCA and wish the YMCA success in their capital campaign which will run through 2013. Teresa, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, Teresa.
Thank you. I don't know, I don't know what to say besides the fact that YMCA is very proud to work in such a great community. We have a great amount of members, volunteers, staff, and we really appreciate working here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service. At this point, is there anyone?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dale Johnson from Mary Avenue.
Dale Johnson, would you like to come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Name is Dale Johnson, 717 Mary Avenue. I last attended a city council meeting about 14 years ago. Said it would be a cold day somewhere before I ever came back to one, and it was a darn cold day today. But I appreciate your time, and the reason I'm here, I believe you have an item on your community development agenda, talking about the city auditorium. I have the opportunity to volunteer at the Rice Hospital, and I was very pleased last year when Rice took the initiative to take it upon themselves and do a grand event in promoting Rice Hospital being 75 years old. Not only was Rice Hospital 75 years old, the city auditorium was. I had hoped the city would at some point in time during last year take it upon themselves to officially recognize that officially old building that we've got. Beautiful facility, very well used by the city, and as a result, nothing happened. I did have the opportunity when LeAnn Freeman asked me to present a program here last week specifically about the memorial room in the city auditorium, and did so, and unfortunately I ended up on the front page. It has served itself well because I've had numerous requests to again offer that same program. And I think I will offer that again and talk about that, but I think at this time, I would issue a challenge even though we're maybe a year, a little over a year late. I would ask that the city at some point in time officially acknowledge the city auditorium. It was officially dedicated in 1937. The mural itself in the stone room was not officially done until 1938, so we can fudge a little bit if you want to and say that officially that part is 75 years old. But I think that facility belongs to the city. I think the city would be duly diligent to officially recognize it, and in working with Mr. Dacken and some of the veterans groups, we're going to try to do another recognition later on during the course of the year, and hopefully I'll be offering a few more sessions in there for the memorial room. The other thing is, I hope the city takes it upon themselves to never get rid of that building, although there has been attempts over the years to get rid of it. There's even been attempts to remove the stones. As a result, we've had a few of them damaged. But that's part of the presentation that I gave and that type of thing. The other thing that I think dear to my heart would be to ask the city to notify their staff that it would be well advised not to use that as a storage facility. It's a room of reverence. It was meant to be that, and I think we have an obligation to the city to provide that. With that, I thank Mr. Dacken for his interest in the facility and willing to work with him as well you can. But I think that dear old building needs some recognition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Councilman, do you have any comments to make?
I would like to see Mr. Johnson become the co-chair on this, so I would, I would like to entertain that motion if we could, to appoint Mr. Johnson the co-chair on this. We, I think we're looking at, because we use it as a fallback area in case of, as we would say in the Air Force, inclement weather, we got to hold our speaker for Memorial Day activity. That probably would be the time to do this, that week, you know, of Memorial Day, to open up that facility to...
Kevin, what is the procedure for this now? I have to, I know this is...
Well, this isn't at this point a motion to have a rededication or an anniversary celebration. It's to appoint Mr. Johnson as a co-chair. Trying to figure out who the other co-chair is, and maybe I'm making an assumption, so we should...
we should spell things out with a little more clarity, and if you're going to kick some money into it, there's a budget concern, so a couple of things to deal with.
Well, I think that they, uh, the Community Development Committee meetings will, will, minutes will come up later, and they asked me if I would, uh-
Okay.
-bearhead or chair this, and I'm happy to work with Mr. Johnson on this.
We'll work, uh, we'll face this when we come to your meeting, minutes-
Okay.
-for your community development meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. And with that, we'll do the Finance Committee report for January 14th. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first item on our agenda was public comment. Kelly Welch was there, and he distributed some information to us regarding the West Central Integration Collaborative Revenue sources, as well as some census data for Candy Ojai County. He also provided a copy of WCCO reporter Jason DeRush's story about Somalis in Minnesota, and this all came about as a result of our, our discussion at a city council meeting about some funding. Uh, that was taken for information only. Uh, the second item was Quick Funds. Uh, staff reported to us that Mr. Sunvolt of Quick Funds Incorporated had called stating that he's no longer needed to attend the finance meeting because he's now working with the Office of the U.S. Attorney General on that matter. So that was for information. The next item has to do with the State Volunteer Firefighter Retirement Plan request. Staff explained to us that the Wilmer Fire Department has been a member of PERA's statewide Volunteer Firefighter Retirement Plan since January of 2012. The statewide Volunteer Firefighter Advisory Board is recommending a change to plan provisions to allow survivor benefits to be paid in cases where firefighters die prior to becoming fully vested, which is five years of service. Uh, this provision is already a requirement for relief associations that are not part of the statewide Volunteer Firefighter Group. So the change would be put in, uh, that plan in compliance with relief association laws. All 63 fire departments participating in PERA Volunteer Firefighter Retirement Plans must pass this resolution in order for the plan change to become effective. Once that has been accomplished, this revision will be presented to the state legislature to review and pass it into law. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to ratify the addition of a provision to the PERA SVF Retirement Plan allowing survivor benefits to be paid to firefighters who die within their first five years of service.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution to ratify the addition of a provision to the PER SVF Retirement Plan allowing survivor benefits to be paid to firefighters who die within their first five years of service. Is there any discussion? Councilman Amon.
Um, just curious as to why it has to go to the state legislature. Is it just for the city of Wilmer, or is this statewide?
Statewide.
It's statewide.
Statewide.
Yeah, it's statewide.
Okay, it wasn't clear, but thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to elaborate on your question, Councilman Amon, this is, uh, deals with contribution, or deals with the PERA, the Public Employees Retirement Association for Minnesota employees. So, um, I mean, I support this, but, um, I take exception to the letter that was sent to, uh, the city about this, saying that we wouldn't have any, that would have, wouldn't have any effect on required municipal contributions to that fund. It looks to me like we're adding a liability to the fund when, by doing this. Would generate, uh, obligations to pay money out of this fund, and I don't see where we're adding any contributions at the same time. And, um, what I read in the paper here this past weekend was that, and I'm aware of this because I'm in one of these funds for my retirement, they're only about, at max, 80% funded. Um, we're one of, I think, about 11 states that are, uh, recognized for having pretty good fund for our public employees, but not totally up to par, need some work, some attention. I think there's about six states that are fully funded, and the other 30-some, they just, they're way out of line. I mean, they don't have any money for this, so I think our state does a pretty good job. But this goes to the legislature, then they'll decide, uh, to pass it, and I, I would assume when they pass it that they would add a financial, uh, input to the fund to make sure that this benefit stays in effect and there's enough money to pay it, so, uh, but that's why the legislature does it. They decide what the contributions are, uh, that the city gets billed for and what the employees would pay themselves.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Roll call? I'm sorry, Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any idea of what sort of a financial obligation this may levy on our city?
I, I don't believe we did. At the meeting, we didn't. If we have some additional information, I don't know. We, we, the thought was it would be minimal. I mean, we have to recognize there's, there's an obligation there. But I defer to staff. Do we have anything?
I'll defer to the Finance Director to respond to that.
At this point in time, the count, uh, correspondence from the state, both from the Department of Revenue and PERA, it indicates that there would be no financial obligation. Now, each year, the liabilities are calculated and compared to the, the activity in the fund balance. And so if the investments in the, in the fund balance don't produce enough, there could possibly be in the future a financial obligation. But at this point in time, there's indication that there is none.
Any further discussion?
Just one question. Just trying to understand this a little more. The SV, SVF Advisory Board, who are they in?
The statewide volunteer, volunteer firefighter retirement plan.
So it's the volunteer firefighters who meet at their meetings or the veteran of themselves, correct?
I'm not sure who's actually on the board, but the, um, but the SVFF stands for the statewide volunteer firefighters.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item has to do with, uh, an annual review of our investment policy. Staff presented the investment policy to the committee for our annual review. Uh, there were no recommendations from, for changes from the committee or from staff, so there would be, there'll be no changes. That was taken for information only. The next item has to do with electronic pawn transfer, transaction fees. Chief Weifels explained that electronic automated pawn transactions are regulated along with a fee schedule which is applied to each pawn transaction. Part of the fee structure charged for pawn transactions is determined by the city of Minneapolis, which controls the automated pawn system. Wilmer has been participating in this program since April 2006, at which time the automated pawn transaction fee was $1.50 per transaction. Of that amount, $1 was paid to the city of Minneapolis, and 50 cents was retained by the city of Wilmer. In 2010, the city of, of Minneapolis reduced their fee from a dollar down to 60 cents per transaction. The savings was passed directly back to the local business owners. Now, in 2013, notification was received indicating that the city of Minneapolis is increasing their portion from 60 cents to 90 cents per transaction. It was staff's recommendation to increase the fee charge to affected business owners from $1.10 to $1.40 per transaction, of which 90 cents will be forwarded to the city of Minneapolis, and 50 cents will continue to be retained by the city of Wilmer. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution increasing the fee charge to pawn brokers within the city of Wilmer for each electronic reportable pawn transaction from $1.10 to $1.40, and to direct the chief of police to notify in writing all businesses subject to the automated pawn system of this increase.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution increasing the fee charged to pawn brokers within the city of Wilmer for each electronic reportable pawn transaction from $1.10 to $1.40, and to direct the chief of police to notify in writing all businesses subject to the automated pawn system of this increase. Uh, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Amon?
I had an opportunity to talk with, um, a businessman who was a pawn shop in town here, and he was, he was, I don't know if he was at the meeting or not, but he expressed some frustration over the, um, the fault in the collection of the small fee, uh, for transactions. And what the transaction fee, I understand, is for is so that the police department has to, uh, has a right to verify if any of those, uh, those things are being pawned or, or sold are, uh, are stolen items. And it's a safe program. But he also advised me that some other information I thought was kind of interesting, and he didn't know how I was going to go about it, but, uh, he didn't want, he didn't want to come public, because I asked him to come to the city council meeting and express his opinion on it, but, uh, if you're going to trade in silver or gold, um, to a pawn shop, it's all, has to be reported, and they have to retain that item for a minimum of three to five days. I'm correct, so, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but, uh, before they can, um, move that item, or discard of it, or sell it to another broker to melt it down. But a jewelry store can do it without, can, can take your items, and they don't have to have any proof or show anything, as a pawn shops are. And there's a lot of items that are sold and purchased at jewelry stores, and I'm just wondering why they're inconsistent. And he said if the op, I told him if the opportunity does come up, I will ask some questions, and this is the opportunity. Um, I'm just curious, legislatively, that if, if there is items that are being stolen and then sold to jewelers, why the jewelers are not involved in that type of transaction? Or why they're not required? And it, it may be it's a legislative issue. You said the city of Minneapolis handles it, but, uh, I don't know how it's mandated or, or who, uh, who regulated, or who came up with the authority to, uh, charge people with this, but it seems to me inconsistent, and I'd just like to know, um, if that issue can be addressed, or who would be the right authority. I'd be glad to address it to the right authority of the state legislature's office, or one of our representatives. Uh, it doesn't seem quite right. And if I'm wrong, I just thought I'd bring it up for discussion. And I value your opinion. Our police chief.
Any further discussion?
Chief.
Chief?
If you want, I can address, um, Councilmember Amon's comments, otherwise I can be quiet as well.
No, please, please, addresses.
I was afraid you were going to say that. Okay. Um, I can't speak with direct authority because the ordinance was passed in 2006, so I wasn't present for the reasoning, or am I aware of what the reasoning of the council was at the time they implemented the ordinance? I know from speaking to Danny Johnson, who is the owner of Security Coin and Pawn, um, this has been some, kind of a burr under his saddle for, since its inception. At the time, in 2006, when the ordinance, first ordinance was passed, or the original ordinance was passed, we had two pawn shops in town. One was KC Pawn, which was on the corner of Fifth and Benson Avenue, and then the Security Coin and Pawn Shop. The, I can't speak for the legislature, but the idea was that multiple items, stolen good items, were passing through pawn shops, and history has proven that to be, um, correct from our perspective. We do recover stolen property from pawn shops. At the time when the ordinance was passed, jewelry stores were not, first of all, gold was not at the price it was that it is now. Jewelry stores were not in the habit of buying gold back or buying jewelry, they were in the habit of selling it, and they still primarily are. However, for pennies on the dollar, they will give, they will buy back, um, specifically gold. I don't know so much about the diamonds or anything like that, and that is the only item they deal in. We have a business that about once or twice a year comes to Wilmer. Um, they are not required to, they are not a pawn shop, they simply offer to buy gold. And you'll see the ads in the paper, and they'll set up at the, um, local holiday and, or the convention center or whatever there, and they'll buy gold. The items that come in, um, they purchase on pennies on the dollar, but the point of it is, is the people that are selling this are not required to sell theirs. They are also not required to give us a list of all the transactions that they do, uh, make at the sale in town, but they have provided us with that every single time. So before they leave town, they come out to our office and they drop off a copy of every transaction that was done. So we technically do regulate their business transactions as well. We don't regulate the local jewelry stores such as Sederberg, Pfaff Wrath, Elmquist, stuff like that. But I don't believe that they engage in the business on the same level as what the, um, out-of-toner, so to speak, come in and do business and, and have one or two days' gold buying sale, and then, and then they're gone. We go through those records, we look at who's pawning item, or I shouldn't say pawning, they're not pawning the items off, we look at who sells those items, and we also attempt to match that property up with anything that was stolen. To the best of my knowledge, the city of Wilmer has, the Wilmer Police Department has not discovered any stolen items coming through on that point of sale. I think the county may have had one, because we share those records with Candy Ojai County Sheriff's Department as well. Um, the people who sell at the local gold buying, uh, opportunity set up there, market, come as far away from Hector, Benson, um, and looking at the dates of birth on them, most of them are in their upper 60s. Most of the stuff that's being sold is wedding bands, um, sometimes watches, and we have very few people, and I don't mean to racial, or not racial profile, but I don't mean to age profile here, uh, or profile at all, but we have very few people that we are accustomed to being in the business of doing home burglaries, um, and pawning items that ever show up at this particular marketing location where they could get rid of stuff. So I don't believe that stolen items are being sold locally here when they come to town and offer to buy gold. I do believe that the people that are selling their gold there, um, are, um, probably not getting the full value of what they're, what they're offering, but many of them are in a position in life where, uh, maybe the husband's deceased, they have no children, or they don't know what to do with it. They might find themselves in a financial hardship, and they're maybe willing to take $50 for a $500 ring or, or more. So I think that's what's occurring at that particular type of event. Now, why the council never regulated the, um, jewelry stores, I can only surmise, and this is only my opinion, at the time it wasn't felt that the business that they engage in would be anywhere near the level, and they certainly don't pawn, they only buy. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you, chief. Further discussion?
Well, just one more question. Thank you for your comments and, and your explanation of things. I also understand that the, um, the amount of stolen goods, like, like you mentioned, were through pawn shops now statewide, since they are regulated, uh, the amount of stolen property that's been confiscated through pawn shops is very minimal. It's gone down dramatically through the years. Is that correct?
It has. Unfortunately, the criminals realize that, you know, this stuff is being tracked much better than it ever was before. The reason we ever engaged, the city ever engaged in the idea of automated pawn was, wasn't because that we were not getting the records from the pawn shops before, but you got to understand, back in that day, there was probably a couple hundred records per day that would come in in the paper file box, or, or once a week if we'd go pick them up. But we would literally get boxes of these receipts, and the employee and staff time it took to go through all these receipts was astronomical. By going through automated pawn, which, which the, uh, metro area offered to us to become a partnership with, and, and they kind of pushed this out on a statewide basis, by using them, everything is electronic. Instantly, we can sort down by item, description, uh, location, um, if we have a particular suspect, even if they pawned, say, at Pawn America up in the cities, they go to St. Cloud, they run down to Mankato, wherever they go in the state, any city that participates in automated pawn, that name's going to pop up, or if I put in a description of the stolen item, whether it's a saw from a construction site, the serial number, whatever, that will pop up. So you see how, how much broader our ability is to attempt to track and locate stolen items. So that was the purpose of why we even went down the road of going to automated pawn. That being said, the staff time that it has saved our department is immense. As a matter of fact, we didn't ever get through every single paper record that was there. Most of them got filed in a- Most of them got filed in a box and never looked at again. So this is a much better system, definitely worth the money.
Well, the reason why I'm bringing this up is, is out of issue of fairness or consistency. And if there's other people in businesses in town, town that are purchasing gold and silver, should we be including them in this type of, of an ordinance to, I guess to make it consistent, you know, so that we maybe can recover more stolen property if it should go to a jewelry store? But also, I, I think it's a little, little unfair that the pawn shops are being charged this fee, which also isn't just the fee that they have to collect or, or that has to be paid. It's that they have a lot of staff time yourself. Now you said that you have a lot of staff time or would've had a lot of staff time years ago, the way it was done, and I can see that. I'm glad the system is working, but I just don't think it's fair that they should have to hire, they, the pawn brokers should have to hire a part-time person just to take care of the transactions to comply with the, the law when other people don't. So it isn't really fair to, to everybody and it isn't completely encompassing stolen property. If you're gonna do the job thoroughly, they should all be, I think the jewelry stores should be included in it. And that's just my comment. And I'm expressing not only my, my thoughts after listening to them, but I, I think it makes sense, it would be more balanced.
To address the issue of fairness, first of all, I, I think the information that is put in the automated pawn system database is no different than what they were required to write on paper and I think you can enter data just about as fast in a two computer, going through the various fields and tabbing forward and typing it, as you can writing it out longhand on paper. Now, if they choose to do both systems, that would be up to the store. As far as fairness goes, that would be a decision to the council, whether they want to impose this restriction or this type of reporting system on the other stores. My opinion as the chief of police is, I have not heard, nor have I had informants come forward, nor have we heard anything through the grapevine that indicates other businesses in town have been in the practice of accepting stolen property. So I don't know if there's a need there. In behalf of Mr. Johnson, I would like to say that Security Coin and Pawn, compared to when the business first started and before it was regulated through automated pawn, we seldom get stolen stuff there and seldom get anything from Wilmer. It's always from out of town that would show up here unbeknownst to him. He runs a good business, that's not the issue. He has the opportunity to pass the fees that are collected to engage in this type of record transaction onto the customer if he so chooses.
Thank you. I just wanted to get your opinion since that's, that's your department. And if we could help you with enforcement of stolen property, this, this was the time to ask. If you don't think it's necessary to include jewelry stores, then I won't, I won't move that or ask any further questions. Thank you. Sorry to take your time.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And then motion carries.
Next item were some reports. We looked at the baseball stadium project, the CVB for November 30th, the local option sales tax as of November 30th, Rice Hospital, Rice Trust activity report. Those were for information only. Final item on our agenda has to do with a discussion on Chamber of Commerce dues. Ms. Stevens provided information obtained from the city attorney as a result of council members' requests that staff research legal opinion regarding the city of Wilmer, Municipal Utilities, Rice Memorial Hospital, and its subsidiaries, Community Ed and Recreation, Wilmer HRA, and EDC paying dues to the Chamber of Commerce. After considerable discussion, council members requested further clarification to be presented tonight at the council meeting in, in anticipation of making a final decision on that matter. And I believe we all got a letter from Mr. Scott and Mr. Mayor, I suspect there'll be some discussion on this item.
Okay. I would like to open it up for discussion if this, if we can. Is there any discussion? Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The League of Minnesota Cities has an excellent 24 pages, public purpose expenditures, criteria for valid public expenditures. I think it would behoove us in the case of the Municipal Utilities, Rice Hospital Board of Trustees, those who are paying dues. Within the first page, it says, "This leads to the question of what is meant by public purpose. The meaning of public purpose is constantly evolving. The Minnesota Supreme Court has followed a liberal approach and has generally concluded that public purpose means an activity that meets all of the following. My suggestion is, is that we just follow this format and get them to certify as a board or commission that they do meet this." So we have this in writing, that the activity will benefit the community as a body, the activity is directly related to functions of government, the, the activity does not have as its primary objective the benefit of a private interest. The Minnesota Supreme Court has also held that the, that, that the general objective of public purpose is to promote the following for all of a city's residents, public health, safety, general welfare, security, prosperity, and contentment. But it, in here, it also indicates that by no coincidence, these interests are the foundation of all legitimate council actions. Council members are elected or appointed to govern by and for these interests and to be the specialists on what best serves the local population. Therefore, the council's written determination of a valid public purpose based on reasonable findings of fact and the advice of the city attorney cannot and should not be underestimated. So I'm, I'm just suggesting, why would we not have the Board of Trustees at Rice Hospital, the MUC Commission, come up with the answers to these questions and have them on record so that we can say, this is why it's okay? I mean, that's pretty simple to me. When you have a 24-page document that talks about it, you probably should, you probably should be using it. The league generally is spot on when they, when they ask cities to do things.
Thank you, councilman. Any further discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We all received Mr. Scott's memorandum from Flaherty and Hood. You know, the, the local Chamber of Commerce is a good entity. They do a lot of good for this community and have done for however many years they've been around here. And I think we all recognize that and applaud them for that. However, I, I look at taxpayer dollars, I'm gonna describe it, taxpayer dollars. The city of Wilmer wholly owns the hospital. Any revenue generated or bills generated is done with taxpayer money. It's taxpayer dollars. Same with the MUC. Any revenue that's generated is actually taxpayer dollars because they're wholly owned by the city. I find it difficult to believe that they should be paying dues to a, I'm gonna call the chamber a special interest group. They are there and collect dues from their members for the benefit of their members, similar to other organizations. Now, a few, a couple of years ago, the chamber was lobbying the council to sunset the local option sales tax because we'd collected the amount of money we said you were gonna collect. However, it was legal for us to continue collecting until December 31st of last year. Now, I, I find it kind of awkward that the taxpayer dollars that went to the chamber and they lobby elected officials to do something against our will. That's my reasoning for not, for, for thinking that they should not be paying dues. The utility shouldn't be paying dues, the hospital should not be paying dues. And I suspect the HRA, EDC and the same, they're, they're, they're all, the HRA is all taxpayer money, federal, state, and local. That's taxpayer dollars. And for them to be paying dues to a chamber, to me, is just wrong. And on another note, it's, if, if it was, if it is legal for them all to pay dues, then I find it strange that they're gonna go to every entity and collect that, knowing full well that it's illegal for the city to be paying dues. They kind of circumvent the city and go to all of our arms and, and collect money. And I don't think that's right. I just, I have a bad taste in my mouth of that. I don't think that's right at all. Mr. Scott's conclusion, I'm assuming, he didn't say yes or no to any of them, but it, it, summary and conclusion states that if the circumstances of such membership actually further the narrow public purpose served by the respective public entity. And he says it seems apparent that the EDC and to a lesser extent the HRA would have a relatively easy time satisfying the standard, but not the hospital and the MUC. My question then is, Mr. Scott, should the hospital, MUC not be paying dues?
Councilmember Christensen, the short answer is, there's theoretical legal authority for each one of the entities that I addressed in this memorandum to pay dues. It doesn't mean that any of the entities can uncritically just make that decision to join just for the sake of joining. They have to have a public purpose for doing so. They have to have, in the case of the HRA, they have, the whole purpose of having an HRA is reason for existence. There's four purposes under statute. I don't read them here, but if they can make the case that being a member of the chamber helps them serve any one of those four purposes under statute, they, their membership would be legal. If they can't, then their membership isn't legal. The EDC's authority is the clearest. They have clear statutory authority to be a member of a trade association or a commercial organization like the chamber. But even under that case, they, they still can't uncritically join. They still have to show that through their membership, they are promoting economic development. This isn't just a case where they can sign up for the organization because someone asked them to without any follow-up and without any act of participation. So that's why, I, I listened to the finance committee discussion on this and I know that what you're really seeking is kind of a checklist, yes or no for each one of these agencies. And I apologize that the law isn't clear enough for me to do that. So I'm trying to boil it down as simple as I can. Each one of these entities has theoretical legal authority to be in the chamber if their membership is actually relevant and productive for the purpose for which that entity exists. And now, here's where it kind of gets tricky because the organization that's responsible for determining that isn't necessarily the city council. The city council clearly has that responsibility for the actions of city government, but each one of these entities has its own governing body, its own structure. There are ties to the city to be sure and you can, as a city council, take whatever position you want as a philosophical matter and request that they, any one of these entities or all of them not join or pull on the different levers available to the city for each one of these entities and try and influence their decision that way. But, you know, the concern has been, well, is the city somehow circumventing the law by having all their boards and commissions and affiliated entities be members of the chamber when the city itself can't be? And the attorney general, and I agree that the city can't be. The answer to that is, the city isn't doing that because it's not the city council taking that action. That's why the city councilors here don't have to be concerned that they're gonna have some liability if one of these decisions turns out not to have been justified. Each one of the governing bodies for each one of these entities makes that choice for the entity and they have a responsibility to do that prudently with, they are public dollars, they have a responsibility to make sure that there is an actual benefit to their organization, to the public purpose for which that organization is formed, to be a member of the chamber.
You know, prior to this issue coming up, I don't know if any of one of us council members or the mayor knew that these entities were paying dues. I didn't know it. I had no idea. Did, did the others, anybody here know that they were? So the one, the issue came up, I, I thought, geez, what are we using all this taxpayer money for? So what you're saying is they need to fill out a form and say, here's why we justify the dues? And then we can say, well, here, Mr. Scott, you tell us if they're justifiable.
That would be my recommendation. We make the decision. That would be my recommendation. If I were advising any one of those entities, and I don't advise them all, my recommendation to them would be, before you join the chamber, you should really deliberate on this and make sure that that chamber membership, that you use it in such a way that it furthers your purpose. So that would be my advice to them. And councilmember Dacken referenced the League of Minnesota Cities Public Expenditure Guide. I agree wholeheartedly with the advice in that. That's geared just to the city government, but the advice stands, I think, for all these entities, governing bodies, which is they should deliberate on the issue and if they think that their chamber membership is justified, they should make some findings documenting why. That would go a long way to proving the legitimacy of that expenditure.
Well, your memorandum states that they should be doing that. And, and you sit on at the MUC meetings, right? I mean.
Correct.
So you can.
Yeah, I expect they'll be involved in their deliberations on that and that would be my advice.
Well, then we should get something in writing before they pay any dues. Am I correct? I mean, we should have something from each of them saying, this is why, and then you make the decision whether or not they're fudging or?
For each entity, you'd have to look at what is the relationship with the city? And you have formal procedures on how you exercise your oversight of the Municipal Utilities Commission, Rice Hospital, which is that you get to your minutes and you have the opportunity to review them at your next meeting and approve them or if you object to any action they've taken, you can override it at that meeting, but only at that meeting. For the other entities like the HRA or the EDC, you don't have that direct oversight. The council can take a position and, you know, request that those entities do something or not join or meet certain conditions before they do, but they operate independently. So you can, you know, exert your influence that you can when you set their levy or when the council makes appointments to those bodies, but that's about the extent of it.
We do approve their budgets or the MUC and the hospital budget. You know, we, we do approve them and then we, the HRA, we do give them some administrative money every year, it's a levy, in the form of a levy. So we do approve that and I've never seen on their, a line item that says chamber dues. I'm sure it's way down the 29th page or something, but are you telling me that if we made a motion and said that none of these entities should be paying dues, that, that holds water?
You can take that position.
Or we just say, please refrain from it?
You can certainly take that position as a policy position. You can't, in the case of the HRA, you can't.
Okay, we can't make it stick. Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Councilman Anderson, did you have a question?
It got clarified with the discussion.
I'd like to make a comment in regards to Councilman Dacken and Councilman Christensen. I took the liberty to look at the League of Minnesota Cities and I outlined a comment that, it says that the attorney general's office has opined that while this authority allows a city to contribute up to $50,000 annually to a Chamber of Commerce, it does not allow a city to become a member of the Chamber of Commerce or to pay dues to it. Now, so I called the League of Minnesota Cities and talked to an attorney there and the attorney says, if it's a gray area, why are you doing it? That was his comment. And I don't know if you feel the same way about that, Robert, is?
Well, I can speak to this because I've researched this comprehensively. I mean, I, I, the, the league does good work. They have put out good general guidance. Keep in mind, that guidance is directed towards city councils. And the city council, the attorney general opinion they cite, I referenced, I attached it to my memorandum, I agree with that opinion. All that is said though, is that there's no statutory authority for a city council and a city government itself to join the chamber. Each one of these entities that I've talked about in this memorandum, apart from the city, has different statutory authority. It's, it's seven different issues, it's not one issue. issue. So the EDC, for example, clearly has that authority to join the member, to join a trade association.
My question is, if it does not clearly have that authority to do so, why are we doing it?
For, to be clear, the city council or the city government is not a member of the chamber, so the city is not doing anything that is even arguably improper. Each one of these other entities, I mean, the analysis is a little different, and they all have the theoretical authority to do it if they can meet certain standards. And it's up to those bodies if they can meet those standards or not. You know, we can look at the reasons they cited in retrospect and say, oh, and say, yeah, that seems right, or that seems a little flimsy, but that's primarily their responsibility.
Can this come back and haunt the members of the council or the mayor?
No, legally speaking, and that was the last thing I addressed in the memorandum, is the easiest answer to that is the city council can be liable for actions that it takes and for decisions that it has the authority to make with respect to the city government, but these are decisions made by other entities. There's ties there to the city, but there's a different governing body for each one of those entities that makes those decisions. I don't think they face liability either, as long as they're, you know, doing their best to make a good faith effort to make sure that they're spending-
And how does this affect complimentary memberships?
I'm sorry?
How does this affect complimentary memberships? Like, we have a complimentary membership to the city of Wilmer, and as I understand, it was, there was $1,000 that the city was paying towards the chamber, but that has now been discontinued. And a part of this agreement was is that they would provide the complimentary membership if out of this $1,000, or because of the $1,000 donation. And now the $1,000 donation has been stopped. Is there still a complimentary membership available?
I don't know. I know that the city, as the League of Minnesota publication indicates, has separate authority, independent of its authority or lack thereof, to be a member in the chamber. The city, if there is a public purpose for it, can appropriate as much as $50,000 to the chamber. So there was, to my knowledge, a public purpose for that $1,000 expenditure, so that was completely authorized. The issue of the complimentary membership, I haven't looked into in great detail, but my understanding was it was extended to the city administrator, who obviously has the freedom to be a member of that organization. So I see nothing improper with how that was set up. I don't know what the status of it is currently in light of the council's decision not to continue with that $1,000 appropriation annually, but I don't see it as being a legal sore spot.
Councilman Rose?
I just want to clarify, that $1,000 that we gave them was for what's called leadership perspectives, and it's a, it's a, it's a class that goes on for many months, and people throughout the community take it. So it was, it was not just money that was given. It was money towards the funding of that class, if that helps you in any way.
I have an inquiry, Mr. Scott. My understanding was that the $1,000 was in lieu of dues, that the contribution to the leadership perspectives. I've seen, I think I've heard that publicly stated by members of the chamber. I think I've seen it in writing in some of the city materials. Now, if that was the case, that the complimentary membership was in exchange for the specific donation to that class, it would seem to me that that would be highly questionable. Am I correct in that, or am I wrong?
Possibly. It would be more concerning to me if the city government itself were the member, and if there were no independent justification for the expenditure. I mean, if it, under the circumstances of the expenditure, if it looked like the city were just trying to circumvent the prohibition against it being a member by kind of setting up a ruse scheme to do it, then yeah, that'd be an issue. I don't, from what I understand, I don't think that those circumstances were present with that.
Councilman, do you see a conflict?
Well, that's my understanding of what was, how it was explained to me originally, and it bothers me, because I don't think it passes the test. It's, you know, it's an indirect method of getting around actually paying the dues, and the city in exchange gets a complimentary membership. I guess I have no problem with the city getting a complimentary membership, but when the original arrangement was suggested and put into effect, my understanding was that in lieu of dues, they paid the $1,000 for the leadership perspective. I just don't think that that's right.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Scott, where does it stop for these entities to be paying dues to, say, the West Central Builders Association? You know, I think they meet all of these four criteria. So can they go to the hospital and utilities and say, we meet these four, I think you should join? How about the Eagles, the Elks? They do a lot for this community. They do a whole lot. How about the Legion? I mean, they, thousands of dollars go to the deer program, the baseball. Where does this stop? I mean, this is a start, so are they all eligible to come to these entities also? And I'm sure that they could come up with the list of why. I mean, the four, meeting these four criteria. Where do we stop it? I mean, there's a lot of other organizations out there, too, you know, the Rowley, the Kwannys, I mean, you just go down the list. If we take one, why not the next and the next? And keep in mind, again, that I don't believe many of us knew that these entities were paying these dues. And now the public, the public knows that the utilities, the hospital, the HRA, and the EDC are all paying dues to be members of the local Chamber of Commerce. The city, it's illegal for us to belong, but now the public knows that. So are we going to get more requests for dues from these other entities, and where do we stop? How do you answer that?
The way, I mean, the way, the only way I can answer that is to refer back to the two criteria that every public expenditure has to satisfy, whether it's by the city or any one of its entities. It's got to be for a public purpose, and there has to be specific or implied statutory authority or authority in the charter. So it's got to have a public purpose, and there has to be authority to do it. And the analysis really tracks closely with the analysis for chamber membership. It's different. The city is, has, you know, serves a broad purpose, as you well know. It legislates for the general welfare. And in statute and in charter, it has, tends to have more specific grants of authority that it exercises for a really broadly defined goal, the general welfare. These entities are all different because they're set up to govern for a very narrow purpose, a public purpose, and the authority granted to them in statute tends not to be as specific. It tends to be more just general, saying, for each of these entities, you figure out what works, what promotes the interests that your organization exists for, and if you can find an action that promotes that narrow interest, it's going to be okay. So it's, that's the only way to answer your question, is it would be for each one of those organizations you mentioned, you'd have to go through the exercise, and you'd have to apply those two criteria. And if there's a good case that joining or funding any one of those organizations is going to help the purpose for which your entity exists, then it's, you know, it's a good case that it's legal.
Financing matters, what this, are we agreeing to anything?
Where do we go from here, then? We just, are we going to vote on something, or just ask these entities to answer the four questions and meet the criteria, and if they do, just, I mean, Mr. Anderson has been wanting to just, let's get this thing done with and move on, and I agree. But where do we go?
Can I make a suggestion? You know, for those entities that we would have veto authority over, and I think if I'm hearing right, that'd be the MUC and the hospital. They should certainly get their documents filled out as to why they think they should be eligible to join, and get those back to us, and then we act on, you know, or move forward on that. Those where we don't exercise the ultimate control, I think all we can do is say, you know, we don't agree. Maybe it's a personal thing, maybe it's whatever, but if we don't exercise control over them, as in the HRA and the EDC, they certainly should go through the exercise of filling out some sort of a form to document for themselves that it's legitimate. But I think that we need to see something from the hospital and the MUC, and then we can move it forward. So could I, I would request of staff that, that those two entities work on documentation as to why they think they should do that.
I can certainly speak with the directors of both of those entities, and they've been provided a copy of Mr. Scott's memorandum as well, so that they understand, and I mean, they've been kept up to date with the information, so I believe they both understand that and are working, and I think they will work with Mr. Scott, too, as they go through that process.
That's, that's good. The one thing I don't want to do is I, you know, the hospital has their own attorney. We don't need to be providing legal guidance to the hospital board. I mean, certainly there'll be some discussion, but for you, time is money. Toss. Okay, all right. So are we okay with that?
One more comment, if I may. You brought up the word attorney. At the last HRA meeting, and the HRA has their own attorney also, Mr. Burgett is their own personal attorney. He stated that the HRA could not pay dues to the Rotary, so they'd quit paying dues to the Rotary, because they don't make a public purpose. But when the question came about the chamber dues, he said, it's a gray area, but I think it's okay for them to pay. Now, Mr. Burgett's name, his office, is in this list of chamber members that was in the paper. Is that a conflict of interest?
I prefer not to make a comment on whether or not the attorney had one or not. I just-
You have a brotherhood.
Those are very fact-dependent inquiries, and I don't think I'm in a position to opine on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman O'Neal.
First of all, I want to thank, thank the city council and the mayor for taking this issue that I brought forward and investigating it, trying to find out what's going on. It's, it's not good to take on or look at what's been going on the last 15, 25 years, but needless to say, nobody in the council was aware of it. I think there, there has been a great campaign, and I commend them. I think they should be on the YMC fundraisers. Whoever went and solicited all those memberships can, because it isn't just the city of Wilmer. There's about 30 tax-paying entities that are paying. And it's not just the issue of the city of Wilmer. It's the school system. It's the county, transit authority, and there's many, many, many others. That thing should be defined by those groups and those people, but that's not our role, and I'm not going to dabble into that. I just question how it was ever, ever even brought up in the first place. I serve in the Minnesota Development Commission. I've never seen that expenditure. Not one line item. For 12 years, it wasn't, it wasn't showing Chamber of Commerce dues membership. Strikes me as kind of odd. So I guess my point here is that if it isn't, if it's gray, why are we even considering this? It's dirty. Clean up the water. Make it clean and transparent for the taxpayers. It's not an issue of not enjoying all the benefits that the chamber does for us. We work with them. We collaborate with them. We like to see businesses grow. We want to see businesses grow. We want to create jobs. So to take on just the Chamber of Commerce isn't the whole issue. It could be a lot of other organizations that do good in our community, too, so I am really concerned about it. And I think this, this pushes us to a point of establishing a policy and finally dealing with it and moving forward. But the chamber is not a government agency. It's for the betterment of business. That's their number-one goal. I would rather support something that's crystal clear rather than gray, but why should the government or any taxing agency, the government in general, the taxpayers, pay dues to an organization just to get their input or their opinion? I will take anybody's opinion, one individual's or a group of 100 that belong to an organization, and collaborate with them, just as much as we would as with one, because we're here to serve all the people, and that means the organizations that are in our community. We shouldn't have to pay them to get their input. We want them to thrive, but they should do it on their own, not at the expense of taxpayers. It isn't right. And I know it's gray, and I think a lot of people are really sensitive to it, because it's specifically stated in, from the Attorney General's office down to flatter the Chamber of Commerce. So this has been going on for a long time, and you know what? I don't think it's right. It shouldn't be going on at all. They shouldn't be soliciting government so they can give an opinion on what they think is better, better for the community. We are the government here. If they have an opinion, please bring it to us. I value their input, and that's the way, that's the way it should be working, not the opposite way. So I disagree with the whole scenario. I think it should be crystal clear and transparent, and thank the council and the committee for dealing with an issue that's not very friendly to a lot of people.
Councilman, have you done any research as to what the total cost is to the city and to the taxpayers?
Pardon me?
Have you done any research as to what the-
The only one I, it was $5,040 that Rice Hospital's paying. I've asked for the information for Charlene Stevens and Steve Okens for the last two months. I haven't received it.
We do not have what other organizations pay, because they're not public, they're not public entities.
But we have the ability to get that information, but we still, I still haven't received it. I got tired of asking.
Any further discussion? I don't think we have a motion to-
Okay, we, no, we don't, but I'll put one on today.
Okay.
Unless there's further questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Councilman Christensen, I understand that you are the chairperson of the Public Works Committee?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and we did meet on January 15th, Tuesday. Item number one was the consideration, consideration, consideration of authorization. Wow, say that three times in a row. The consideration of authorization to schedule a public hearing on the Lakeland Drive Interceptor Facility Plan and the EIW. Mr. Paul Gierich of Bowleg, Inc. was present to update our committee on the timeline for the Lakeland Drive Interceptor slash Midwest Lift Station project. Bowleg is currently in the preliminary design stages and working on the EIW and the facility plan. The PFA loan application, state aid funding, and other various funding groups included in the project are being developed as well. At this point in timeline, Bowleg is requesting authorization to schedule a hearing date for the EIW and facility plan, and this is a requirement of the Minnesota PCA, which allows public review and comment on the proposed plan. Both documents will be presented to staff by the end of January. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce a resolution to set a hearing date of February 19th, 2013.
A motion has been made and seconded. Now, this is a resolution, as I understand?
That is correct. It's a resolution.
To set a hearing date of February 19th for the consideration of authorization to schedule the Lakeland Drive Interceptor Facility Plan. Is there any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Item number two was just a few miscellaneous items. There was a question raised concerning police presence in the Wilmer Public Schools, and Chief Wifels informed the committee that there are three officers who work in the school system, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and one that goes between the three elementary schools. Councilmember DeBlick requested the most recent transportation plan be placed on a future agenda item. agenda item or future agenda for review, and that was the end of our committee meeting. If there are any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Facility Committee report for January 15th. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question for the chief. Just wondering if there is anything that can be talked about or reported with respect to the tire slashing that occurred around Rice Hospital? And also, there's been a number of pellet guns or BB guns that are shooting out service station windows, dry cleaner windows, the library, I understand. Is there some sort of a status report we could hear on that?
In response to the tires being slashed, I think we had 20... I just gave JP the number this afternoon. I think it was 27 or 26 tire slashings, nine of the incidents at Rice Hospital. We have videotape of suspects. We are in the process of posting that on Facebook, finding a good shot, and then asking the public's help to identify the people. In regards to your question on the pellet guns, that has been a longer ongoing problem, probably for about four months. It first started and showed up at the courthouse. There's been about $3,000 worth of damage done there periodically, once every two or three weeks, a window would be shot out. The library suffered from it. The business interior designs at the corner of Fourth and Litch has received pellets through their window. We have no idea. We have researched the downtown cameras, trying to figure out if we could see anybody shooting at the windows, but we have no leads on that right now. So I'll take this venue to ask for the public's help.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Also, I believe there's been, at least in my particular case, there's been six windows that have been shot out at one of my properties with the pellet gun. And this happened, you know, several, three years ago. So it's been ongoing, but it's not only going on at commercial places, it's going on residential neighborhoods all the time. And I just want to know, since this is aired publicly, is there a crime preventers fee if somebody has turned in who's a suspect to this?
Crime stoppers is still present in this area. We still have crime stoppers. There has been no reward offered for that. I don't believe Crime Stoppers has received any information on it. In response to the ongoing for three years, that's actually been more like 33 years I've been here and over the course of my career, we have periodically taken, you know, it's seasonal somewhat. It's also like graffiti. One person, one or two people can be responsible for a whole slew of incidents. We look at patterns. The most recent pattern started in October and it's been confined to basically the downtown area so far. There are a few aberrations that go outside that limit, but for the most part, that's where it is. We have not started seeing or had reports of it happening in the residential from what we've been monitoring recently.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on the table?
We do.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Councilman Fagerly, I understand that you are the Community Development Chairperson?
I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. We met on Thursday, January 17th. Item number one was public comments and no one was there to speak at this time. Item two was the commercial exterior maintenance ordinance. The committee discussed the second draft of this ordinance to regulate exterior maintenance of commercial, industrial, institutional buildings. The ordinance has now been cleaned up to meet municipal code. Staff informed the committee that the format will be introduced as an ordinance in the near future, but we're going to pass it on to the city attorney first. This ordinance, if passed, will be enforced on a complaint basis only. There was a motion made and seconded to refer the ordinance to the city attorney for his review and, following legal review, transmitted back to the council for a public hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to refer the ordinance to the city attorney for his review and, following legal review, transmitted to the council for a public hearing. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number three was an exciting potential project. Mr. Gus Wardell from Hutchinson presented a proposal to acquire and redevelop the East Side Mobile Home Park. Used to be called Mobile Estates way back when. I think it's Regency East now. He informed the committee that he owns a mobile home park in Hutchinson, that's the McDonald Mobile Home Park, and it has been very successful. His plan is to purchase the mobile home park and replace all the current homes with three-to-five bedroom homes. He has a letter of intent with the current park owner. All the new homes going into this park would be purchased by Mr. Wardell and subsequently resold. All homes will be on a permanent foundation. Because of the size and appearance, they are considered to be manufactured homes rather than mobile homes. They will have the two-by-six walls and meet all current energy codes. Mr. Wardell said he planned to upgrade the infrastructure in the park and will have crime-free and drug-free addendums to the lease. No rentals will be permitted. All homes will be owner-occupied. Background checks will be required for all prospective owners. Mr. Wardell concluded his presentation by requesting that the city consider issuing revenue bonds to assist with financing and to create a tax increment financing district to assist with the cost of infrastructure improvements. It was a consensus of the committee to work with Mr. Wardell and we directed him to pursue formal applications for the revenue bond financing and tax increment financing. So that'd be a big benefit for the city, especially the East Side.
I have a question if I may. Did Mr. Wardell indicate what he would do with the existing mobile homes?
Eventually, they'll all be removed. So even though he's not closing the park down, there won't be any relocation fees given, but...
Because of the new regulations, you mean, that they would be removed?
No, once you buy a park and you close it down, there's relocation costs that have to be given, but he's purchasing it. Some of the tenants will stay there. Am I correct, Bruce? And I think all of them own their units now, or there may be some rentals there.
There are several rentals at the parks, though the majority of the homes are owner-occupied. But Mr. Wardell did say that through attrition, the remaining homes there will be eliminated over time, but it would be his intent to immediately begin buying new homes to put in the park for sale to prospective buyers.
In your opinion, Mr. Christensen, does it sound like a good deal to you for the city?
Properly executed and managed would be a great improvement over what exists there right now.
Thank you.
He said currently they're paying lat rent from 310 to 330 and he's hoping to reduce it down to 230 to 240 so it'd be making affordable housing.
Okay. Thank you.
And he'll all have them installed professionally. They'll have concrete piers put underneath tied down, so...
I understand this. Was there information only? Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's interesting to note that this story in the West Central Tribune, if you look at, call up the story on your computer, if, and I'm not a Facebook person, I haven't figured that out yet, but there are more than 100 comments to this story on Facebook, if that's an accurate number. And then also in the paper today, it indicated that there are about 14 mobile homes that have been removed from mobile home parks recently. That's what I counted, 14.
Yeah, I would say in the last couple of months, there have probably been 14 removed. This past year, probably saw a total of 30-plus homes removed from the two parks.
Yeah, so...
That was for information only?
That's for information only. All right. Item number four. Councilman Dacken suggested that the community highlight the history of the War Memorial Auditorium. 2012 marked the anniversary, or the 75th anniversary of the building. Mr. Dacken agreed to spearhead the effort. And now tonight, we heard that Dale Johnson also offered... Is that correct, Dale? Okay. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Dacken and Mr. Johnson.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to appoint Councilman Dacken and Mr. Swanson to the Johnson.
Johnson.
My mistake. I'm sorry. To the community to work with the memorial auditorium. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. You are appointed.
And once you work out a budget, we'll send you to finance so they can pay for it. I was just wondering, did staff know about the anniversary date? Or when Dale left, he took all his records with, so we didn't know?
I'm not sure how we missed it, but I mean, obviously, we did.
Okay.
Emails were sent to the staff last year.
Okay. Thank you. The next item was just discussion on County Road 5 and 19th Avenue. So this is where County Road, or Highway 40, Genio South to 19th Avenue, there's no street lights whatsoever. And there's been some truckers that have been after me to get that lit up. Well, find out it's not in the city limits, so staff is working with the county to get some right away and hopefully by spring, some new lights, street lights will be up there.
I'll give you the call.
All right. And if there's no other business, I'll make a motion to file the minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the Community Development Committee report minutes for January 17th. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of the resolution of appointing election judges. Whoops. I'm going to go to number 12. Consideration of the appointment of fire chief. Gary Hendrickson is Emergency Management Operations Coordinator for the City of Wilmer. Charlene, would you like to handle that?
Sure. Our fire chief, Gary Hendrickson, has a background in emergency operations as well. During the interim period, Don Erickson of Candyohai County has been serving that role for us, and it would be appropriate at this time to appoint the fire chief, Gary Hendrickson, as the city's Emergency Operations Coordinator.
Move to proof.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to appoint Fire Chief Gary Henderson as Emergency Operations Coordinator for the City of Wilmer. Any discussion? Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I heard the chief with Charlene on open mic this morning and thought he did a great job, comes really well-prepared. Good luck on adopting the hydrant. Great idea, I think, and maybe you could speak to that a little bit, how important that is to keep the fire hydrants clear for you folks.
Mayor, members of the council, yeah, it is. It's extremely important. Obviously, last Wednesday, about 11:15, we had a structural fire within the city. And that particular hydrant was shoveled out, so we had good access to it. But as I said this morning on the radio show, it's imperative to the businesses and the community, the residents of the community, to make sure that their hydrant is shoveled out if possible. I do have, as I call it, adopt a hydrant. It's a concept potentially to work with businesses as well as the residents to encourage them to shovel out their hydrants. And a lot of it's just really the fire department, myself, or the firefighters going out and taking a look at the hydrants, making sure that they are shoveled out and, again, working through donations with the community and the businesses within. We might, we could provide them a gift card for doing so. Past communities have had the opportunity to do that. It's been a fairly good success within those communities to encourage, to make sure that the hydrants are plowed out, if you will, so that we have good access to them. This year, not a big deal, but when we have heavy snowfalls, it's obviously a bigger concern than it is this year.
Thank you, chief. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And now we will move into the consideration of resolution appointing election judges. Kevin, would you cover that for us?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, knowing that we have an upcoming February 12 special election, we need some election judges. And you'll see in the resolution before you, we are going to carry that out with five judges per precinct, not six. We feel the pace of that should be easily managed. You also have absentee judges because we've appointed the absentee ballot board. They show Marv Cray and Jan Lindblad and Dennis Dinison there. We also have absentee judges for the nursing homes because, as luck have it, that ward has two nursing homes, and so that's an extra step. All those are listed before you. It is staff's recommendation that we approve the resolution detailing those judges and where they work.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution appointing election judges as requested. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. The consideration of the request to vacate a tree planting maintenance easement. Bruce, do you want to cover that?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, a short time ago, Central Lakes Cooperative purchased a home on, at 302 8th Street Southwest. It's actually on the corner of 8th Street and Litchfield Avenue. In the course of their title review, discovered that there was a tree planting and maintenance easement on the property, but that easement was not defined, so it exists as a blanket easement over the entire property and becomes an encumbrance for development. We've discussed this matter with Public Works people and Municipal Utilities. They see no need for the easement moving forward as it's poorly defined and there's really no need for it because we have all our tree plantings in the boulevard on those two streets. The Planning Commission discussed it and adopted a resolution recommending that the council set a public hearing to approve the vacation. So it's a recommendation of staff that the council set a public hearing on this matter for the February 4th, 2013 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to set a public hearing on February 4th, council meeting to consider the request to vacate a tree planting maintenance easement. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. And we'll get into the announcement of the council meeting dates. Councilman Anderson?
The Rannions Committee will meet Monday, January 28th at 4:45.
Councilman O'Neal?
January 23rd, Wednesday.
Tomorrow?
4:45. Yep.
Councilman Fagerly?
There's no meeting.
Councilman Christensen?
Tuesday, January 29th, 4:45.
Tuesday, January 29th, 4:45.
Is there any miscellaneous that we haven't covered?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
There's been a thought that's been on my mind for quite a while, and I'm sure maybe you're getting tired of me bringing this up, but I had a vision or a thought of the recognition that we are not giving to all the volunteers, boards, and commissions in our community. In previous years, serving in the council, we had recognition and awards given to people publicly at the city council meeting. I'm just wondering if we could maybe discuss this through appropriate committee or refer it to staff, but rather than dealing with all these serious matters, it'd be nice to kick back and just sit around and have a cup of coffee with people and get to know who they are. We have people serving on the boards, and I'm, quite frankly, I don't know all these people. And it's hard in our busy day-to-day schedules to do that, and I'm sure that's consistent with most of the people on the council. I would like to see an event, a recognition night or evening set aside for the public to recognize and appreciate the people that have come forward and put in many, many hours at no cost to the taxpayers and their volunteer time. And I don't know if that would be how we could do it. I have a lot of ideas, but just the concept in general, I wonder if there's merit there and if staff wants to think about it. And it would be a budgetary item, too, but I really think it should be addressed.
If I may, Councilmember Amon, certainly we can, staff would be happy to have any ideas that you have. I mean, other communities that I have worked in have done volunteer recognition events. I think it's really a matter of the council allocating some funding toward that. You know, at this point, there is, there has not been, but certainly there certainly could be funds found even for 2013. And I just, I think it's just something that has not been done in the past, or at least not in the recent past. But it certainly is something the council can do if the council chooses to do so. And there's many different ways, as you know, that it can be done.
I just wanted to bring it up and refer it to staff for consideration or any committee that wants to run with it. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I find myself agreeing with the city administrator and with Councilman Amon. I think it's an excellent idea, and let's work towards that.
Just to be clear, Councilmember Amon, you're looking at something that would probably occur in 2013 to recognize folks at this point. I mean...
Yeah, I don't know how many, I don't know how many people we have going off the different boards, committees. It could be an annual event. It could be open to the public, soon to violate the open meeting law and have it at the city auditorium. Just a thought.
Okay.
Any further miscellaneous?
Just one comment on that. Maybe it could be in conjunction with Night Out. The, what's the name of it? Chief?
National Night Out.
National Night Out. Maybe it can be in conjunction with that because we're going to have people there, and there's goodies, and there's hot dogs, and...
It certainly could be combined with another event. It could be done sort of towards the year-end time to, you know, an event. It's a coffee or opportunity for people to come and go to. You can do it as, you know, as formal or as informal as we wish to do.
Just so you're aware, National Night Out for the last few years has not been held at Robins Island with one, everybody coming to one location, but it's been independent neighborhoods, so it might be a little bit more difficult to do it at a venue like that.
If we could do one night out at Robins Island, though.
There, I mean, I think if there are council members that have ideas for either time of year, that would be appropriate, or ideas, we could certainly take a look at those with staff. But we can look at what, you know, there's a variety of ways to do something.
Thank you. Further miscellaneous?
Move to adjourn. Second.
Most have been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned.[1776.13]